Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Downers Grove Grade School District 58 Board of Education here on Monday, January 8th, 2024 at 7:00 PM here at the Downers Grove Village Hall. This meeting is being livestreamed for the public on the Village of Downers Grove's YouTube channel. Melissa, will you please call a roll?
Member Doshi.
Here.
Member Ellis. Can I hear you? Uh, member Hannes.
Here.
Member Harris.
Here.
Member Olchik.
Here.
Member Weiner.
Here.
Member Hughes.
Here. Tonight, members of the audience will have an opportunity to provide comment to the board later on in the agenda. The board asks anyone wishing to comment to please fill out a card and indicate the topic to be addressed. These can be placed in that basket over there to my right. I have allotted 30 minutes tonight for public comment and ask everyone to keep their comments to three minutes. We're going to start out as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance, so I'd like to welcome the Student Council from Hillcrest to help us say the pledge.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would like to welcome up Principal Zepka. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Good evening and Happy New Year. We are excited to welcome our Student Council officers. Come on up here and join me. I do want to also give a howl out and recognition to our staff supervisors, Mrs. LaVie and Mrs. Rogers, who are here as well.
Hi, my name is Kiro Donahue and I'm our Student Council President. We would like to share some things about our school and our Student Council. Hillcrest is a great school because it's open to everyone and meets the needs of each individual student. One of the things we really enjoy doing is grade level buddies. This is where an older grade is paired with a younger grade and students across the building get to know each other better. Hillcrest Families is another time where grade levels mix and work on team-building activities that go along with the focus topic of the month. We love getting to know students and staff from other grade levels. As the oldest students in the building, we get to serve as mentors to the younger students and help lead Hillcrest family meeting activities.
Hi, my name is Audreyna Tong and I am Vice President of Spirit. Hillcrest School follows three important rules: be respectful, be responsible, and be safe. Hillcrest, alright, sorry. Students at Hillcrest earn posse lips for demonstrating these behaviors in their classroom, as well as other parts of the school. At the end of each month, Mrs. Zepka pulls posse lips during our possum lunch raffle drawing and students get called up to the stage to choose a prize. A hound dog of the month from each class is also recognized at our all-school meetings for demonstrating school expectations throughout the month.
Hi, my name is Johnny Calavenu and I'm the Vice President of Service. Once a month, we meet as a school in the gym for an all-school meeting. Each grade is responsible for introducing a new focus topic to the school each month. Our focus topic for December was grit. During our Hillcrest Families meeting, we discuss what grit and growth mindset means to us and work together on challenging activities, building a tower out of cards. This requires us to use a lot of grit.
Hi, my name is Rachel Reynolds and I am the Recording Secretary.
My name is Tommy Dussman and I'm the Clerical Secretary. We've had many service projects this school already. One of our service projects at the end of October was to donate candy to Operation Support Our Troops. Over three days after Halloween, we were able to collect 121 pounds of candy to donate to the troops. Personally, I never read all my Halloween candy. It makes me feel good to be able to give it to others.
In November, we also collected travel-sized personal items for holiday stockings for Operation Support Our Troops. In December, we collected food items to donate to our local fish food pantry. Our collection weighed a total of 352 pounds. This month, we plan to make Valentine's cards for seniors and centers in our community.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to welcome up our PTA co-presidents, Kelly Fallon-Wilson and Katie Wojciechowski.
Hi, I'm Kelly Fallon-Wilson. I have four kids at Hillcrest, a sixth grader, a fifth grader, and two first graders.
I'm Katie Wojciechowski. I have two kids at Hillcrest, a sixth grader and a third grader.
We're the co-presidents. We're excited to talk to you for a couple of minutes tonight. I think one of the things that makes Hillcrest's PTA very special is that we work really hard to create a family atmosphere. We want everyone to feel welcome and like they have a voice and that their opinion matters to everyone. So we have a lot of programs that we feel very proud of. Something new that we did this year...
Am I supposed to talk about this? Like Kelly said, our newest initiative this year is called the Celebrations Tree. And Kelly and I were super proud to start this new tradition at Hillcrest. So during our holiday season, it's so much about community and about giving and sharing. And Hillcrest as a school, Principal Zepka sets the tone with the "We Are Family" motto and slogan. So Kelly and I tried to carry that through the holiday season. So we leaned on our families and our teachers and assigned grade levels different holidays that are celebrated all around the world so that our students could learn about all different celebrations, including Christmas, Kwanzaa, Hanukkah, Eden, and many, many others. So each grade level then worked with family volunteers and their teachers to create an art project that can be hung on the outside tree. So our tree stood outside Hillcrest and was filled with all of these celebrations and holidays. This also allowed a lot of our students who celebrated holidays that aren't always spotlighted to have a voice and share with their fellow students about their experiences at home and really bring their home experience to their Hillcrest community.
Well, we have some ongoing programs that we wanted to highlight, too. One is new family mentoring.
Right. So we welcome families to Hillcrest every year, not just our incoming kindergarten families, but families that possibly have moved to our community. And before school starts, the PTA in the summer works with our office staff and we assign a mentor to these families. So as these new families are coming into Hillcrest, their mentor will reach out, usually via email, just provide a little, "Hey, welcome to the community. I have students in the following grades." And throughout the year, then, we ask these mentors to reach out to these families, making sure they understand all the communication that comes from the district, from Mrs. Zepka, from the PTA. Do you have any questions? No question is, you know, too little, too small. We feel strongly that this program helps develop this community feel right from the get-go, so these families and their students are very much welcomed as soon as those doors open on the first day of school.
Another ongoing program that is somewhat special to Hillcrest is Partners in Art. So this is a little bit of an enhancement to our regular art education. Parents sign up for up to four presentations per year, per classroom, of different artists that the parent then teaches the children about. And the presentations are all existing. We had a parent start this program probably almost 20 years ago. And she did a great job organizing everything and making it very easy for parent volunteers. So typically, a couple of parent volunteers come into the classroom. Let's say you're learning about Van Gogh. They choose an art project to do with the kids. They do a little short slideshow that's all set up for them. And then we do have places throughout the building where some of those artworks can be displayed so that other kids can appreciate it, so that parents walking through the school can see them, administrators can see them. And the kids really seem to like it. And it's also a nice way for parents to feel like they get to be a little bit more involved in the school community and being in the classroom, which of course, well, most parents love to.
And again, keeping in Michelle Zepka's motto, "We Are Family," Kelly and I, as co-presidents, examine all of our events and we try and make sure that we offer several free events for our families as well. So a bingo night or a family movie night. And we do hear the chatter among the students, like, "Hey, are you going to bingo night?" Or, "Am I going to see you at movie night?" Again, just making sure that we are creating a community feel within the building and outside of school hours. Kelly and I have really enjoyed that part, I would say, of our responsibilities.
We showed Elf in December and that was very popular. So that's a little bit of a highlight of some of the programs that the PTA at Hillcrest is responsible for and the things that we're really proud of. Again, we feel very lucky to have such a collaborative and positive relationship with Michelle and I think that that shows in the involvement with the PTA and just the general positive feelings, I think, all around and the family community that we feel like we've helped build. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So our school theme this year is really an enhancement from last year's "We Are Family." "We Are Family," which leads right into "Anything Is Possible." This is centered around our philosophy that you have heard about, really establishing those relationships between staff, students, the larger community, with all of our families. Our Student Council and PTA shared some of the things that we value most at Hillcrest. I'm going to touch on just a couple of minutes here, some of the work that we have been doing as a school to continue to align with our district's strategic plan and further support student growth. So a little bit of data here to start out with. Last year, we, or a year ago, so this would have been spring 2022, we looked at our reading grade level growth scores from the spring map, where we had 63% of students meeting the benchmark. When we compared that to IAR in the spring of 2022, looking at our ELA performance, which includes writing, only 47% of students met those expectations. So throughout all of last year, we really focused as a school on increasing students' writing stamina, developing student writing strategies, enhancing our instruction through student writing conferences. So, fast forward, with a concerted focus on writing, one year later, we saw notable success with 61% of our students meeting expectations for MAP. But then when we looked at our spring '23 IAR data, which again is incorporating writing, that number increased to 66% of students meeting expectations, an increase of almost 20% over the year. So, very proud of our gains there. So we took that data and started to just dig deeper and look further. Our instructional leadership team then, at the end of last year, collected some additional evidence through the analysis of our spring benchmark data, looking at those assessment scores and then have... We had teachers just do some observational data during their benchmark reading instruction. So it was noted that students really in third through sixth grades often demonstrate success with comprehension, demonstrating those comprehension skills during classroom discussions, when asked to respond orally to comprehension questions. But the results of the survey really noted weaknesses in both written expression and conventions at nearly all of the third through sixth grade levels. So anecdotally, teachers specifically noticed that students were struggling with expanding their thoughts and ideas in writing on online assessments. We hypothesized that a contributing factor was the lack of exposure and practice with completing that multi-step process, responding to those questions, you know, when you're reading one or more texts and then you're, you know, further compounding the complexity of that task by having to generate a typed response. So you need to read the two texts, generate ideas, organize your thoughts, and then they're hunting and pecking their way through trying to type the response. So it appeared that a good part of the ideas that they had were lost during that process. So out of this came our two-part, or one of our school improvement goals, that is two parts. Part one being enhancing our reading comprehension instructional strategies to support students being able to read the multiple texts and synthesize that information and be able to orally respond to questions. But then part two of that is really an extension of the previous goal from last year, with grades three through six really working to develop that writing fluency and more specifically while using technology. So in partnership with our instructional coach, we worked as an instructional leadership team to plan and design monthly professional development activities. This was introduced to all of our staff at the beginning of the school year. The professional development at this point has really been focused around understanding grade level, the grade level progression of the target standards, and then really consistent use of curriculum resources. That's helping to provide that continuity with instruction. It's helping teachers to better understand and focus their efforts. Furthermore, we've been analyzing our assessment survey. So after each benchmark unit assessments, we ask teachers to complete a reflective survey where we are looking at and measuring the success students have from the online assessment, but then further, we're analyzing the writing outcomes and we're also tracking the typing practice that students in grades two through six are getting. So this is keeping the implementation certainly at the forefront of our minds, but then it's also helping us plan future professional development-focused topics. In the end, you know, or I shouldn't say in the end, coming up, rather, we're going to be comparing some student writing samples across grade level teams. We'll be sharing some of the struggles and successes that we are having so far this year with those instructional strategies, specifically with increasing and improving that written output in response to reading multiple texts. We will continue to forge through. I have to be transparent in saying that the taking of the online assessments has notably been more challenging than we anticipated. However, with persistent students are becoming more comfortable, more confident, definitely more skilled in synthesizing the information, but it is a work in progress nonetheless. Ultimately, you know, there's several positive outcomes that we anticipate coming from this, really working towards more enjoyment with reading and writing and kids being able to read and then show us what they know and demonstrate that, not only in their classroom discussions and oral language, but also in writing. This is just, again, one component or focus area for our school improvement plan. Nonetheless, we are excited about our work and really eager to continue to strive for more seeing the benefits and resulting growth that our students will make over time. So thank you very much for giving us this opportunity. And one more round of applause here for our amazing hound dogs.
Thank you so much for being here this week and thank you to the PTA. And for our Student Council members, we got some gifts for you. Thank you very much for being here tonight. All right. Listed on tonight's agenda are five communications received by the board. Are there any additional communications a board member would like to share at this time? Okay. That brings us up to our spotlight tonight, which is on the gifted programming. Does Airhart, welcome?
Good evening, board. How are you? This evening, Alenny Gudzuski and I will be giving you an update on the gifted committee's Alenny will be walking through some work that the committee has done with doable differentiation by Jan Kaisi and then talking a little bit about our MTSS processes and how our gifted students are part of that continued work. Additionally, we will review our current programming and then continued focus on meeting the needs of our students five days a week, which will go into our continued work of the gifted committee, which is coming forward within one of the next upcoming meetings with a recommendation of what we want programming to look like moving forward. This will be an additional process in terms of information that we will share that we would like to incorporate for next school year and then in subsequent school years as well. And then finally, I will give just a quick update on the math acceleration programming and where our work lands right now. So I'm going to ask, Mrs. Gudzuski, just come up.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm going to go by my notes a little bit more than I typically do because I get pretty excited about what I'm sharing tonight and I want to keep it concise for you. The work that we've been doing, the last time I was here speaking to you, I shared that our committee, some of our members attended a workshop last spring by Jan Kaisi and the brain research on cognitive learning that she did. And this is a little bit different than what we typically know of learning styles. It's not your auditory learning and kinesthetic learning necessarily. There's much more to it. So I'm going to give you just kind of a surface level, but some of the strategies that our committee has been doing through the book study. And then we brought this to all staff during our grade level meetings, so they've experienced most of the strategies, or some of the strategies that were in the book, and I'll share some examples, about how these strategies then support our students with that MTSS, that multi-tiered systems framework that Liz was talking about. So the first one is a wait-go card. And we have a room full of introverts and extroverts in here. Some of us as extroverts are more comfortable jumping out, speaking up, sharing right away. And then some of us, believe it or not, more like me, are introverts. And it takes a bit of time to just kind of process what I'm comfortable saying. And we have students in the classroom who are within those two, and we're a little bit of both, right? So at the grade level meetings, our staff was given an article to read. They were each given a card. On one side, it says "Wait," and it is red, and on the other side, it says "Go," and it is green. And the students, per se, are told, "Once you finish reading the article, flip your card from wait to go." And that way, the teacher knows you are finished reading, you are ready now to engage in conversation. And the purpose of these cards is to really give our introverts in particular time to process, time to show that I am now ready to have this conversation. But also, our extroverts, who are excited and confident in sharing right away, they're eager to share, but what they know is I have this card that is demonstrating to my teacher I have something to share. I'm going to have that opportunity to share. I don't need to be the first one to share it because oftentimes, some of our students think, "I wanted to say that, but somebody else said it before I could." The next one, there's a quote up here about student discourse, student conversation. And this is a very powerful quote, that "The student discourse is the most powerful K-12 differentiation strategy, and it is easy to implement and it meets the needs of all of our learners, but also our gifted students and their unique learning needs." So in this example here, we have a web in the center is a topic. You could have students read an article. It could be a math word problem. It could really be anything for any content area or specials. And students then will write about it on the outside. So an example, I've done this with advanced students for math, and they've written on the outside ways to solve a word problem. I've done it with social studies as well with a topic that they've read on an article and taken a certain stance on it. So the students here, they could even differentiate with drawing versus writing, but it's getting students engaged. They're having their conversations. They're thinking about what they might say through their writing first before they engage in those conversations. And then they're working on all of their social skills. So they're reading, they're writing, but also they're listening, they're collaborating, and they're demonstrating critical thinking skills. The next one is based on the brain research about how our brains want something novel and something as simple as a basket can provide that novelty. So in a primary grade, this could be something with particular letters that we're jumping into, pulling out, you know, a ball and a bat and certain little visuals or toys or so forth, and talking about the letters and then blending them. Or it could be about social studies topics. Up here, I have an example. It says, "Consider the following terms: rugby, boredom, 70%, ice fishing, school, and anting. How might each be related to the topic of crows?" Okay, right away, your brain is scrambling for a number of ways to make connections. So we're engaging the students before they might even engage into a topic. This could be done, again, with math word problems, with vocabulary problems, or creative writing topics. So we're meeting the needs of our learners on all of their different levels here. Eventually, you could have students create the topics that go into the basket, too. I have three examples here. The first two are MPE. I'm now showing how we can use the differentiation strategies to create, to foster some curiosity as students engage into a new topic in their specials areas. And then the last one is science. For PE, this is an example of what you could do by demonstrating or showing visuals of different sports equipment throughout the decades. And then that is getting students into that conversation and that learning about the evolution of sports equipment and how they've evolved in safety moving forward. So this is called an anticipatory guide. It's a great way to start out something new that we are about to study and dive into. Just about done here. The planned movement one, this one I did on Institute Day with our staff last year. So they were given an example of two different learning scenarios, two different learning environments, and they were told to choose one. They had to go to one side of the room for one and another side of the room for the other, and then they engage in conversation and discourse across the rooms. So if you were on this side, you would explain why you chose that side. And the hope is also to persuade somebody from the other side to actually switch and come over to your side. So very engaging for the students. You're listening to what other students are saying and you're really mulling it over and analyzing it and synthesizing your thoughts in there. This can be done with four corners as well, but a great strategy. It's great for ages five to 55 years old and doesn't require any prep. And then last but not least, I don't think I have a favorite, but this one I do have a connection. My daughter and I, she's nine years old, we've been taking improv classes. And this is actually one of the strategies in there, and we love this game. And so when I saw this in this book, I had a light bulb really go off onto it about how it really engaged us at all different levels and it really meets the needs of our students at all different levels, including our gifted learners. So it's yes and. Students are talking before they are writing, so they're really mulling over their ideas, as I mentioned earlier, too. But the purpose here is to almost give a bone to the other person to build off of and to keep the conversation going, so it bounces off in a ping-pong manner and you're then developing even deeper through the thoughts. So the example here, student A would say, "I think Ron is going to betray Harry because his envy is growing." For example, in the story, and then giving evidence. Now, student B, instead of saying, "Yeah, I don't think so," they're going to say, "Yes, and." Those are the two words that you always need to include. "Yes, and it seemed like Harry is siding with his other friend and Ron feels betrayed." Back to student A. "Yes, and." And now they're continuing to pull in some evidence from the text that they're reading. Again, this can be done with any specials, any content area, but they're learning that collaboration and working on those critical thinking skills, too. So I'm going to go through the current model, which you're all very familiar with. We have one day a week. Students are bused to one of our schools, so they spend a full day at one of our schools. They are with mixed schools there then. We feel like students' needs are being met. They are excited and they are engaged in what they're doing. I love when I get to come to these classrooms. But we also got some student feedback as well, and we understand that as much as we try and work any special events around the days that students are going to their gifted classrooms, sometimes it does coincide with it. We also know that our students who leave for their gifted classrooms are very mindful about what they might be missing for their core instruction and just making sure that they are up to pace in there. So we want to keep in mind some of those social-emotional needs as well. Our gifted teachers are extremely strong in social-emotional learning, and that is embedded. I see it throughout every lesson that they do. The standards are also embedded through their inquiry-based projects that they're working on throughout their thematic units. And then their interests and their strengths are built upon through those engaging activities. Then last, we have newsletters. Our teachers send a newsletter not only home to our families, but also to the teachers who have students going to the gifted classroom. So they are also aware of what are the students working on, not only the topic, but the social-emotional skills, the academic skills, and the content areas. So the continued work of our committee, we know from Douglas Reeves and his We know from Douglas Reeves and his research that change is best built and sustained when it's built off of strengths, and that truly has been the foundation of the committee's work for the past few years. So we've worked on the what, and now we are starting to transition, or we have been transitioning into the how. How do we do this? So we've looked at our gifted standards, we've looked at our curriculum, and we have also really dug into what I call the I triple C, the inquiry, the creativity, the collaboration, and the critical thinking skills. But what we want to continue to do is think about that, how do we meet the needs of our students through the five days a week? You've heard me say it like a broken record. They are gifted five days a week, not just one day a week. And the differentiation work that I just shared with you is one of those ways that we're doing that through our tiered systems of support. Here, we're working through a process by Cotter and Wagner, and their research is really around systems change, and it's listed up there, evaluate, focus, plan, and review. We have dug into evaluate, and we have been focusing on a number of different areas of our gifted model in tandem. We've looked at the model framework, we've looked at curriculum, the differentiation and supporting that, as I mentioned, the criterion identification process, and more. So we'll continue to support the differentiation within our committee and beyond our committee as well. We have that responsive learning environment with these strategies and looking at all of the different traits of our gifted learners and how do we support our classroom teachers to build that stamina and that depth in the general education setting. So we'll continue that work through our multi-tiered systems of support through MTSS. We understand that we have a very large district and that we have changes coming up and exciting changes. And one of those changes is sixth grade going to middle school. And so with that said, our committee right now would like to take a step back of the focus on sixth grades gifted programming. We have been focusing on fourth grade in particular and knowing that in a couple of years, those fourth graders are going to go to sixth grade at the middle school. That's a big program change, and so we would like to shift our focus to stay on fourth grade and then move into that sixth grade when they go into that model. The middle school currently has mixed grades also. So when we do make that shift, we are also going to look at adding content areas into it. So it won't just be ELA-focused, but how do we embed some other content areas, science, social studies in there? For criteria, the committee is, they're still thoroughly examining this process as well, making sure that we do have a thorough and accurate process for our identification process of our students. So we want to ensure that what we are evaluating going forward is what we're measuring. We want to make sure it's reliable and valid. Are we looking at any adjustments in criteria? Are we looking at any instructional delivery models? So that's a conversation that our committee is going to continue to do and discern whether there will be any potential adjustments to that criteria process or not. One of the things we have talked about and will continue to talk about is we may do a small group focus on that, and that will allow us to in tandem work on that identification process, too. But I still have a heavier focus of it in the fall as we focus more so on that program model. So with all said, we will work towards having that collective agreement and maintain that commitment to have that thorough evaluation process, but also a program that continues to meet the needs of our students and that any of the decisions that we make are in the best interest of all of our students, but particularly our gifted students for this program model, and we'll keep you up to date for any of our progress going forward. And as Liz said, we'll be back in the spring to share more specifics.
I continue to just be floored by the work of our gifted committee. You can see just how passionate this group of educators is in ensuring that we're providing the best programming for our students and really being thorough in their review and recommendations. So we're hoping in the next month or two or at one of our upcoming future meetings to have that recommendation of what programming could look like for the upcoming school year and in terms of if we are going to make any adjustments to our criteria-based model or if that will maintain in our current system. The final update that I want to give the board is just the process of our math acceleration program. So each year, we do evaluate that process and the assessment procedures. The students are currently taking their winter benchmark assessments, which will guide our collection of their data in determining if we have a new batch of students who will move into our acceleration process. We have established our timeline for identification, which goes through a cycle of reviews, teacher recommendation, as well as principal overview. And then we take those numbers. We look at how many students are currently in our acceleration program. We currently have 800 students throughout the district that run through our acceleration program. So it's not a small feat to figure out where everybody goes and what classrooms they need to be in, but we're really proud of the work that has been done. Additionally, we will look at any new students who will be part of that acceleration process, create class lists, and then determine any transportation needs if we do have to bus students from school to school. Additionally, we look at any of our students who are in our single accelerated program and make determination if they need to be double accelerated in their math programming. So those are all things that will be coming up. None of the actual processes or evaluation criteria will be changing for the upcoming year, but I'll give you updates throughout the upcoming months in terms of any updates that are happening within our math acceleration process. Any questions from the board?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. It was mentioned that the committee has collected data from students, student voice data regarding their experiences in the extended program. As a parent, and just knowing other parents who's children participate in the program, you know, I hear about the struggles of being, leaving class once a day, especially when you get into, let's say you're sixth grader and you're doing seventh or eighth grade math. So I'm aware anecdotally of attrition when you look at kids who are enrolled in extended fourth grade and then looking at the sixth grade numbers. So what is, what are your takeaways in terms of addressing that? And also, like, do we, not to say that we need to throw the baby out of the bath water and reinvent that model, but do we have a lot of confidence that that one day a week model over at another school is serving us in the best fashion that it could?
Right. And I definitely think that the work of the committee has been to determine what would be the best way that we may be able to service a group of students within their home school five days a week while keeping in mind that that math block is kind of a time that is carved out of their day and ensuring that we are providing that support at maybe a different time for their gifted learning. So that definitely would attribute to how we would reduce the number of students who maybe would decide to not participate in our gifted programming. Because we have seen some students who have said, I need to really focus on my accelerated math, or I'm missing instruction that's happening in my classroom that I don't want to miss, and feeling like they maybe need to catch up. So we're hoping that through recommendation, that if we can have the program happen at the home school, that will alleviate some of that need to back out of programming.
I have just one question based on the potential to pull back on the sixth grade planning. That's, I just want to clarify, that's not to say that there isn't going to be a focus on the sixth grade students that are still cycling through.
Yes.
Just that they're making a plan on how to address those students as well as the fourth grade ones coming in that will go to sixth grade at the, because I just don't want those couple of years of students to not receive the same kind of thought process that they've received.
Absolutely. So the guiding principle is going to be that we would slowly roll out any new implementation process. So we would look at fourth grade being a group that potentially would receive that programming five days a week, but we would keep our current model for fifth and sixth grade, which has been discussed with the board previously. The point that Aleni was talking about was, we had a conversation at one point about the potential of adding a subject matter at the seventh grade level for our current sixth graders. And really, right now, because of the way that the classes are mixed, and we're looking at ways to ensure that we're providing those middle school students with the most support that they can have, we want to ensure that we're doing that with its due diligence and not just adding a content area to their gifted programming. We really want that to be very thoughtful as well. And this particular group of fourth graders would be that first group to move up to the middle school, and so they would have that additional programming at that time.
Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then on the math acceleration, I know with double acceleration can be a challenge at times, so I'll be curious to hear what the recommendations are because moving your student who maybe is in, you know, fifth grade into a seventh grade classroom for some parents is a really hard decision to make. And, you know, what are the other supplemental ways you can provide to a gifted student who might be, you know, even beyond a double accelerator? We've heard some of those comments before. So I'm looking forward to this spring report out. That's going to be good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your hard work. You guys do a lot.
The committee has just done incredible work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to reports to the board. First up is our superintendent report.
Thank you very much. First and foremost, to everyone listening online or watching online and here in the audience, a Happy New Year. We're glad to see you. In terms of the superintendent's report, we just started back today, so it won't be as lengthy as it typically is. For personnel, there are no updates for personnel, but for curriculum and instruction, just a brief reminder that we are now in the winter benchmarking season. So all students will take math testing in K through eight, and then many of our primary students will also be taking the Ames Web Plus assessment. We are also currently in the process of an ELA pilot, and so what that means is later this spring, we'll be asking the board, we'll be taking a recommendation from the committee for curricular materials. To make sure that we have the 30-day window that we've always had for people to view those, they are going to be put on public display, all the pilot materials at the Downers Grove Public Library, as well as the district office on Warrenville Road. So those will all be available to anyone who wants to review those prior to any recommendation. We're anticipating that recommendation will likely come in March or April, and we just want to make sure that we get all those materials on public display so people can see them and have the opportunity to ask Liz or her team any questions that they may have. After this, you're going to hear an update on the audit from fiscal year '23, so that will be the finance presentation for my update, so we'll skip over that real quick. One of the things that our technology department is working on, because we have a unique situation in our district, while all of our schools are located in Downers Grove, but we also have many unincorporated areas, and some of our students in those unincorporated areas don't have access to library cards. And then we also have other municipalities that feed into Downers Grove, whether that is Oakbrook or Woodridge or even little chunks of Lyle or Lombard or other towns. So there are many offerings that the Downers Grove Public Library does specifically for District 58 students that not all of our students can take advantage of because they may not be able to get a library card at the Downers Grove Library. So James Ike Miller is working on an intergovernmental agreement with the Downers Grove Library that would allow all of our students in District 58 to get a library card from the Downers Grove Public Library. Please note, if you're like me and your kids check out books, sometimes they don't find their way back to the library. So this would be up to individual families. So no student would be issued a library card unless their family wanted them to have a library card. So if the board were to approve that, that would be one of the stipulations that we would have. So this would not be a, every kid gets it. Parents on registration would indicate whether or not they wanted to do that, and then we would issue them a library card. So we're excited about that, and again, just really taking an equity approach as we go through these things to make sure that every student in 58 has the exact same opportunities. In terms of special services, just a reminder, as our families return, we are very proud of the new IAP meeting facilitation system that we have, and so we are going to be going through all of that with our upcoming IAP meetings. We're very grateful to the families that allowed us to pilot this. We've gotten a lot of really good feedback from Jessica or about Jessica and her team. So again, just something that we're very excited about with facilitated IAP and really trying to continue to build stronger bonds with all of our families during the IAP process. Facilities, I want to thank Kevin Barlow and his team and many of our partners in the audience. We started the construction projects for our referendum, so it was a lot of celebrating as we started getting the ball rolling. Winter break construction work at both middle schools included areas of asbestos abatement to prepare for the spring and summer larger construction projects. All areas received air clearances by a third-party environmental testing company, and we went ahead and notified staff and families at both of our middle schools last week prior to returning. Additionally, contractors were at O'Neill to move some exterior doors. We put a new exterior door in the gymnasium as we start our construction because that small gym behind the large gym will be knocked down starting, you know, in the summer, so we had to put a new exterior door for safety procedures. If you've been around O'Neill a long time, like I have, it's still a little weird seeing that exterior door in the gym, but that will be part of the construction, so we're happy for that. At the February board meeting, we are going to make a recommendation on a furniture partner as we start to build furniture for our new spaces. Interviewed several firms. I want to thank Todd, Kevin, our architects, and our owners were up especially for leading the way on, you know, the interviews. We are going to be recommending a company called Henrickson. Henrickson comes highly recommended by all of our partners. Our owner's representative has done a lot of work with them. Our construction manager has done work with them, especially on higher ed projects, and Whiten Company has also done a few projects with them. So we're excited to make that recommendation, and in the next board package, the board will be getting all that information in the public, will have time to review it. I was hoping that we wouldn't have to mention this under public relations. I was crossing my fingers thinking we would get away without any snow this winter, but looks like January 2024 has some different plans. As always, we were on the call with county today, and we can expect anything from rain to 10 inches of snow, so we're not going to be making the call at this particular time. All kidding aside, though, we are obviously closely monitoring the weather. As an elementary district, our goal is always to have kids in school. That is where they learn best. And due to the construction schedule, we can't have traditional snow days this year, so they would be remote days if we had to do that. That being said, we would never jeopardize student safety and our staff safety, but it does look like with the forecast, the snow is going to come over a 48-hour period. They're talking about now, they've reduced it to about four or five inches over that time, and so it does look like we are going to be able to have in-person learning. As always, we'll get on our conference call, superintendent's, about 4:30 a.m. We'll discuss it, and we will make the call at that time. As a reminder, we do not make the call that school is open. If you don't receive a call, school is always open. If you start doing that, people will get confused and it will just need to mask chaos out there. So right now, again, school will be open tomorrow unless there's significant disruption over the, you know, evening hours. So again, we're going to continue to encourage families to look over the e-learning plan that's posted on our website, so if we do have to have a remote learning plan sometime this winter, families have access to that. I encourage everyone to take a look at that. Also, we went ahead and prepared today with our students and staff in the event we need it tomorrow or Wednesday or Friday. Friday's looking bad as well, so we just want to make sure that we continue to prepare for that, and hopefully we never have to use it. So that is it for the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments?
No. I'm really happy about the library card program. Thanks, James, for heading that up.
All right, then that brings us to the monthly business report. Todd Dreifel.
As we noted last month, you will see that there's not a treasures report a year to date. This is the earliest possible time to have a board meeting on the second Monday, and with the schedule last week and when statements were coming in, we certainly, we just couldn't get those together. We will send those out, though, in the next day or so as we complete those and have those wrapped up to the board and then post them out as well. We will also have them at the FAC meeting on Friday morning for them to see as well. So there's that piece. Couple of things that you have on the agenda for approval this evening is the registration fees. Those, as the board recalls, were presented and discussed last month at the December board meeting. These follow in inflationary increases for supplies and materials, with the exception of those items that are contractual-based, namely the transportation. We have put the 9% increase on those fees based on what we are to anticipate in our renewals that we're hearing from our transportation companies. Those contracts will be coming to the board in the near future in the spring. The capital item, we will have a presentation, a review of that with our capital team at the time of when the board considers it. And then the last thing I have is the audit presentation, and we have Betsy Allen, partner from Miller Cooper, the district's independent auditor, here to give a high-level recap. You have obviously the audit before you. It's also in the agenda, as well as the management letter and responses. Again, this is one of those things that will also be, Betsy will be coming to the FAC meeting on Friday morning to review that with them as well, perhaps going into a little more in-depth conversation with some of those items at that point. But that is, and this is the time for that presentation, there's an action item for the board to accept the audit, simply a, as you can't approve that, it's an exception, acceptance. And I should note that all of the items- acceptance, and I should note that all of the items have been filed with this date at this point. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Allen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I thought this year, I've done this presentation for many years, I have put a short presentation together that we can go through just to go over, sort of to tell you what's in, what reports we've issued, and what's, you know, what specifically is within those reports that you guys have to review. So first of all, just to start out, just why does a district have an audit? There is a legal requirement, oh, sorry, I have the, I mean, there is a legal requirement for each district in the state of Illinois to have an audit by a qualified auditing firm, who's also qualified to do audits in accordance with government auditing standards. ISB requires that audits are done in accordance with government auditing standards. The purpose of our audit, you know, is to do an examination, and here it's very important, we point out that we're here to obtain reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance, that your financial statements are free from material misstatement. We do use sampling, you know, to do all of our audit procedures, and therefore we're not looking at every transaction that is going through the district for the fiscal year. The primary purpose of our examination is for us to be able to provide the opinion on the 2023 financial statements, as well as provide some in relation to opinions on other documents and filings that are done. We also, if needed, do provide an internal control communication, which we refer to as our management letter. Here, we can provide recommendations, if there's any deficiencies in controls, and just other items for improvement and other efficiencies within the district. And lastly, here, the professional standards do require us to discuss certain information with the board, and we will look at some of those required communications later in the presentation. This, excuse me, this slide here does report all the final documents that were provided to the district. We provided the annual financial report, which are the GAAP financial statements, which are what we're going to look at shortly. We also have the annual financial report that's submitted to the Illinois State Board of Education. This is their state form that is required to be filed with them, with certain attachments. We also issue our report on government auditing standards, as well as our single audit package and single audit opinion. The district does expend over $750,000, and therefore is required to have a single audit. And then lastly, as we just talked about, is our required communication to the board letter. This next slide displays the financial profile summary. The school code requires Illinois State Board of Education to develop a calculation to help monitor all the finances of the school districts in Illinois. You know, please remember that there can be extenuating circumstances outside the district's control with this calculation. It's a sub-calculation that's done within the state AFR that's provided to ISB. This year, as you will see, the district did move down to the review, and this is mainly due, as you'll see in the last category, of the long-term debt margin remaining, and it's due to all the bonds that were issued from the referendum passage. So like I said, it's where, it's a, it's a set calculation that's done, and mainly, like I said, due to all the bonds being issued for, from the passage of your referendum, is what moved the district to that category this year. This year, we did have one new accounting standard that had to be implemented, was GASB statement number 96, a subscription-based information technology arrangement, and I'm sure this is the first year that James had to deal with the auditors very much, but thank you for his assistance. We did analyze all the arrangements and the information that would fall under, could possibly fall under this statement. After the analysis, we did determine that many, most of these were all short-term, and therefore did not affect the financial statement reporting. So the next part, the next part is the GAAP financial statements, which are the bound financial statements that you all should have received a copy of, and just wanted to go through the sections that are in that report. The first part of the report, starting on page one, is the independent auditors' report, and again, this year, we issued a clean, an unmodified clean opinion, which is the highest level assurance that we can provide on mass auditors. Next, within the document is a management's discussion and analysis. I always feel bored if you don't wanna read all 100 pages. This management discussion and analysis is a great place to get an overview, contains some financial highlights. It also has an overview and description of the statements that are contained within the document. It provides some condensed financial statements, as well as a listing of items that could have a financial impact to the district in the future. The next section is the basic financial statements, starting on page 15. Here, you're going to see the government-wide and the fund financial statements, with reconciliations that describe the different bases, the difference bases of accounting. There's also a lot of footnotes detailing the accounting policies and other information, to help assist you in understanding better the information provided in the basic financial statements. The footnotes have a lot of information on the pension liabilities and OPEB, which are other post-employment liabilities, as well as the cash and investments, capital assets, and the debt of the district. The next two sections are the required supplementary information and supplementary financial information. Here, there's schedules with multi-year information on those pension and OPEB liabilities, along with budgetary schedules for all of the funds of the district. And the last section of the report contains the other supplemental information. Here, there's schedules of all the general obligation bonds outstanding, with the maturity schedules for each of those issuances. As we talked about before, there is a required communication letter to the board, and here I just wanna point out a few things, that our audit was performed in accordance with government auditing standards, and uniform guidance, uniform guidance is what is followed to prepare the single audit. The letter also contains a summary of future and current pronouncements that were effective from GASB. GASB is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. We already did discuss the GASB 96. There is also a listing of GASB statements that will be effective in the future years. I believe for fiscal year '24, we finally have a year off of having to implement any major, major GASB statements. The letter also communicates to the board any significant accounting estimates and any financial statement disclosures, that we had no significant difficulties dealing with management completing the audit. I wanna thank Todd and his team for their assistance during the audit. I know there's been lots going on in the business office this past fiscal year, so, but we all worked together, and, you know, accomplished, got the task accomplished, and got everything filed. We also did not identify any unusual transactions. We did have one, one adjustment that we did not post, due to it not being material in regards to a penalty that is out there, and then management assigned and provided us with a representation letter in order for us to issue all the required documents, and the AFR and all the required documents were filed with the Illinois State Board of Education the day the documents were released. And then lastly, as Todd had already mentioned, we did issue our management letter. I'm not gonna go through each of the individual, you know, items that are in the management letter. I will be at the meeting on Friday morning to have any further discussion on that. I know Todd also provided this management responses, and how the business office was going to proceed with these issues. But I did just list out, there are three levels, you know, deficiencies, there's some material weakness, significant deficiency, controlled deficiency, and then I guess you call it a fourth, we do have our management advice. So here, on this slide, and the next slide, I did just list out the different items that, the different items that, that we did report within this letter. I do see I have one mistake up there that I fixed in mind, but must have forgotten yours, the electronic systems approval. That was actually just a management advice and not a controlled deficiency, so I apologize for that. And then on the last slide, this is my contact information. If you ever have any questions or comments, you can certainly go through Dr. Russell or Todd, but my information is also available on this slide also. So does anyone have any questions or comments?
Questions or comments from the board?
I have a question.
Correct.
I imagine you do this for other school districts as well. What are the material things that you might find that you, that we should be aware of, that come up in school districts? And clearly, there wasn't anything that was material in ours, but there was just, I only sit in 58, so I don't have a good sense of what other financial reporting looks like across the state.
Are you, are you asking about what other kind of findings we might find at other districts?
Yeah.
I mean, we go from districts that have no findings, to districts that have minimal. I mean, if you're looking for more material ones that we might see at some districts, we have districts that don't get their bank recs done for, for the year. I mean, that's the major one I can think of. Ones that might have a lot of material audit adjustments. We do assist all the districts with, with the conversion from the cash basis. You guys, the district keeps their internal records on a cash basis, and then, as a non-audit services, we do assist in doing the adjustments with their assistance to the modified full accrual. But there are times when we have some major cash, cash adjustments for either items that aren't posted, because they haven't done their bank recs, so therefore they don't know that they haven't posted items. So that's, that's the top one I can think of off, off of my head. You know, one thing I always tell districts, and it's never been an issue with District 58, is I guess if you do nothing else, you know, all month, you know, pay your employees and do your bank reconciliations.
Thank you.
One of the other things, too, is that FAC Friday morning, we will be discussing that at length, so if the board needs additional time to review, if you have any questions that pop up after this, you know, please feel free to send them to Todd or myself, and we will certainly get answers to those at the FAC on Friday morning. Sorry.
Could you go back just one, I think it's one slide?
Oh, hang on, wrong button. I got it, thank you.
Can you just tell me what accounts payable revenue cutoff means?
So part of, you know, part of the procedures we're doing to, to convert to the modified accrual basis is, you know, posting the accounts payable, but the listing is coming from, from the district, and so we get the listing from the district, and then we also do testing on it, you know, based on different materialities and scopes.
Sure.
Yeah, and we found some places where there was stuff that was included that shouldn't have been, or not included.
Yeah, just.
Yeah, the cutoff, and I, and I believe.
It doesn't move back and forth between 4th and 30th and April 1st?
Right, right. And so it's just, it's just something, you know, they've had some new people starting.
Sure. Just depending, depending on the date on the invoice, this should have been in fiscal year '23, this should be in fiscal year '24.
So like I said, you know, we will, you know, we'll continue to work with the district and, you know, assist them, you know, you know, where we can and what we've done, just to make sure that, you know, the information that we're getting the first time is more updated. I believe the revenue cutoff had to do with some pushcoin and, what's the other one you used? Sorry, I can look in my letter. In the, in the letter, too, that you were left, there's like all the, there's detail of each of these findings, too, like exactly what it was, but the revenue cutoff had to do with pushcoin and e-pay. During, like, the last week of June, there was some amounts that were proper, that weren't, that were excluded from the revenues, so, because of the timing that they're paying. So it's really looking at the timing and ensuring that there's, there's a cutoff, the cutoff is proper for our, for our needs.
I think to get a true accurate depiction of what one fiscal year looks like compared to the other one, June 30th is, is really important, having those proper cutoffs, so that's one of the internal conversations that we were having. I think what made it more challenging for us this year is our longtime accounts payable person, or, excuse me, our payable clerk, or, our, our payable, let me start where I was. We had turnover, Dr. Paddell left to become chief school business official in a different district, and when, when people typically leave in June, they're taking those last couple weeks, you know, get their vacation in and things like that. So a lot of the cleanup that would have normally taken place in that last week in June didn't happen. Now, that isn't an excuse, so one of the things that we have to do is to make sure that those proper cutoffs are in place, and to make sure that, you know, if we have that situation, which is inevitable in today's market, that just a lot, or a little more cleaner on the June 30th deadline, on both revenue and expenses.
But I do wanna, you're telling me correct, I mean, your business office had some bad timing, you know, of, of people going to other jobs, and, you know, it seems to be happening more and more lately with districts, and, you know, there's a lot of training that has to go in, you know, with newer people, and, but I don't see any reason you guys won't get exactly where you need to be.
It's challenging, because, you know, normally, if you have that longstanding person in there, and you get to that last week in June, they can say, oh, this is wrong, I need to correct it. Well, with that person not being in there, and the new person starting on July 1, that's how something could get on the wrong year, and so Todd and I have discussed that, and that is certainly in Todd's letter to the FAC, to the board, about some of those changes that we'll put in place.
I have one more question, just for Todd, actually. So, you know, the, the, this is all, this is a snapshot in time, looking at our, our financial status as of June 30th. I'm still, I wanna be able to get an understanding of how this, our new understanding of, at the end of the fiscal year, kind of impacts this current fiscal year. I know you mentioned in a report to the board that there was some revenue that was received more than 60 days past end of the year, that did not get recorded in fiscal year '23, and is not being recorded in fiscal '24. So I guess what I'm, I'm looking for, perhaps there could be an update to the board in the coming weeks, maybe something we could have a conversation at a future board meeting or workshop, is, has this affect the big picture? So I express concern at the, at the, at the time we were adopting the budget, that we weren't quite hitting the 35% policy requirement for fund balances, and anticipated fund balances on June 30th of 2024. Obviously, this changes the math a little bit, but, you know, at the same time, though, because we're missing all that revenue from '23, now our fund balances have taken a significant dip. So in, just in the, in the context of this snapshot time, but also looking at, you know, our five-year plan, how are we doing? I guess we just need a little bit of an update to understand how all this affects each other.
Yes, and yes, and so that is one of the things, and obviously, as we're going through, you know, as we're now starting, you know, the planning process for '24, '25, and the five-year planning, we actually, I think, started that really, you know, early December as a, you know, a management team. That is the conversation we've been, we've been talking about. And so I think we can, we can step you through the impact of where the June 30th ends in that position, what it looks like in '24, and then what it's going forward, and, you know, '23, yes, we did rely more on the fund balance, because we did not take in and, and go, and bring in some of that ESER III money that we intended on, and understand that ESER III money is a, is a, an open piece that we were gonna, we spread between '23 and '24, we didn't bring that in. It will all be coming in in '24. And so that is, you know, that has that impact, and to help that piece. So there's that aspect of it. There is the aspect also, that there is revenue, again, you know, because of our staffing structure, some of those federal grants that didn't, that we would have normally had booked in June or July, and had that money come in in July, August, that would have shown up in the audit, might not have showed up in cash on June 30th, but it would have shown up in the audit as an increase in, or as a federal revenue that would attribute it back. That came in, in end of Sept-, you know, September, October, so that is now '24 money, it won't be, you know, it's not '23. So that aspect, as well as an increase, you know, to, and to, to the positive side on fiscal year '24. So we'll go through, yes, we can put together a format, and kind of detail out, you know, point by point, overall, how we're stepping through to ensure that we're still meeting the fin-, you know, within the financial requirements and constraints that we need to be, both with the 35% fund balance and the capital structure, and, and also then, you know, covering program costs and so forth, and going forward, as we're working through and moving on to the next planning piece as well. So that, that is certainly on our mind, and we've actually been, Dr. Russell and I have been having several conversations about it, I think, weekly. Just kind of going through, making sure that Just kind of going through and making sure that we, where we're at is we're closing out and then what it's going to look like moving forward so that it, you know, that-
So, what's your vision for like communicating this to the board in terms of, I mean, I know we have usually a spring workshop, or would be some-
Yeah, I think we could bring back pieces of that before that, you know, and we can certainly look at how that looks like when we're, we're coming back in, you know, February and certainly March, board meetings to have a-
And when we're looking at the overall calendar when the five-year plan, Todd's too, for the board, I think that would be a nice thing to dovetail in, in addition to the five-year plan, which obviously, they're not mutually exclusive, but to really have a separate conversation about your question in particular, just to reassure the board that, that revenue will be captured in this fiscal year and that the fund balance 35% will be obtained.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions from a board member at this time?
Did I answer what you were asking?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for being here. We'll see you on Friday.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Okay, that brings us to the committees. First up is the Policy Committee. They met on December the 10th. Vice President Harris?
Oh, yeah, December 19th, we met at O'Neill. We had a, we usually get like a, an update a couple of times a year.
Yep.
So, this was a sizable one, and the committee went through all of them, and the, this, you know, probably few dozen policies affecting everything from personnel to the operations of the Board of Education, to some curriculum pieces. Some of them were some language changes, some of them were just simple legal reference updates. The, they're, the, our, our procedure as the Board of Education, we don't just right away approve them, they're, they're here for a first reading tonight. We will give the community and the board a month to digest them, and we will come back in February and vote on them after everybody has a chance to understand the changes. Like I said, there are many of them to go over, so I won't, I won't take up the time to go over every single one because that took us an hour at the meeting. However, if anybody has any specific questions, of course, Tracey or I or Dr. Russell will be able to answer them. Hearing none, seeing none?
It sounds like these are pretty just standard updates.
Yeah, I don't think that there's anything in here that is, you know, particularly controversial. I think what you see is, you know, as laws get passed in Springfield, these are quick updates, or in this one in particular, you saw, you know, some of the laws taking first, or taking place, excuse me, on January 1st. So, you know, for instance, the anti-opioid medication, that is now law that every school has to have that. And so, you would see that policy being updated in order to align with the law. That's just one example of, of what you would see. Yeah.
And our Policy Committee is a diverse group of stakeholders in the community, and the fact that none of them really generated a significant amount of discussion led me, leads me to believe that this is, there's nothing earth, earth, earth shattering in this thing.
All right, then. Is there a motion to approve for first reading the policies in press, issue 113, as presented by the Policy Committee?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion on that? All right, Melissa, please go. Roll.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannahs.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
All right, the motion carried to approve for first reading the policies in press issuance 113, as presented by the Policy Committee. Anything else?
Nope.
All right. That moves us on to the Legislative Committee. They met on December the 20th, 2023. Member Harris?
No.
I'm sorry, Heinous?
Yes, we met on the 20th for Legislative Committee. The main focus of the meeting was to continue to plan and prepare for Legislative Breakfast, which is going to be on February 2nd, hopefully, if there's no snow. It seems like there's always snow that day, but, so we are going to start around 7:00 AM with kind of the mingling portion and then move into similar format that we've had in years past with a, kind of a, a full group session of questions for all legislators and then breaking out into the small groups for kind of a more discussion-formatted approach. So, we brainstormed a little bit, just kind of broad topics, and then we're going to work on formulating actual questions and things like that this week when we meet on Wednesday, you know, to get down a little bit, you know, into more of the specifics of what we want to be asking and things like that. But that's pretty much, it was, it was pretty short and sweet. We did talk a little bit about some current legislation and things that's being discussed in Springfield, but nothing kind of similar, like you guys were saying, nothing earth-shattering, nothing super controversial or anything that, that came up. And we don't anticipate any, anything super controversial at the breakfast as well. Most of the topics were pretty, you know, we don't expect a lot of commotion, so, I guess.
I think the one long-
What's the fun in that?
I don't know.
The one long-term thing that we briefly touched on is the Tier 2 pension fix that is coming. The pension fix that they put in place for TRS, not for IMR. Remember, the majority of our employees are under the TRS retirement system where some of our custodial staff and office staff would be under IMR. IMR is a very well-funded pension system that is, is a very stable long-term. TRS is not, and there are different tiers. One of the fixes they tried to do a few years ago around 2012 was to change the benefit structure for those that entered into the system after 2012. One of the problems they have with that is that that benefit structure doesn't meet the requirements of if you were in the Social Security system, because teachers are not. In the Social Security system, their benefits would have to max those, and because they don't, it's only a matter of time before a lawsuit is brought up from someone in Tier 2. So, the state is going to have to do something about Tier 2. I wouldn't expect that it's going to be imminent, but down the road, that is going to become a conversation because the way they can fix it is really one of two ways. The state can fix it, or they can just push it right back on the local school districts. That happens in a system that's already, you know, heavily reliant on local property taxes, especially in Dupont County, that can become very problematic. So, that is something, obviously, we're watching very closely, and both legislators and educators throughout the state are working on fixes and recommendations to that. So, a lot more to come in the coming years on that particular issue. And we briefly touched on that in the Legislative Committee.
Any questions or comments? Is that everything, Emily?
That's it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Financial Advisory Committee has not met yet. We meet this Friday. So, that brings us to the District Leadership Team, who met on the 18th. Member Doshi?
Yeah, we had a good meeting with, this was the first where we had a primary focus on her new strategic plan and walking through each of the items on the strategic plan with an update on where we are. Obviously, we're in the early stages. This is our first year of this new plan. And so, we focused primarily on the logistics of how we'll provide update, or how we'll hear updates, what we'll provide statuses for and color coding systems so that the community and us as a board and the district as a whole can have a good sense of where we are and each of our goals. And so, we'll be able to see that in our, in our periodic updates, in our packets on Fridays, and I imagine in other ways that, Kevin, you can share around how we, we as a board might engage in the strategic plan updates?
Yeah, and one of the things, you know, as Craig was sharing, Faith and James are working right now on revamping our website around the strategic plan. So, those that aren't as involved in the work have a place to go and, and to check. And we really appreciated the feedback that we got. Again, we have not just board members, we have staff members and also community members on there who really gave us feedback in terms of what the community would like to see and what our staff would like to see on the progress there. So, you can expect a lot of updates to our website. We will be archiving the previous strategic plan, that way people can still access it, or access it if they wanted. But obviously, we want to make sure that we put the current strategic plan front and center. And then, finally, don't forget that at the May meeting, we will be doing kind of a year-end review, letting the board know how far we've come in a year.
So, you're replacing, you're going to archive the old dashboard, and then you're going to create some new style of dashboard?
That's correct. And so, the, the new dashboard, what you will see is more in line with what it looked like toward the end of the last strategic plan, because what we saw in, in the anecdotal feedback that we received from numerous committees and stakeholders is we, we kind of did a running record. So, that works out great in year one, but by the time you're to year five, you're going through 15 pages to figure out where they're at right now. And, and so, more succinct updates, more archiving, so people can go ahead and, and take a look at that. So, really just listening more to the community and wanting to make sure that if anyone goes in there, they have a, they can just very quickly see where we're at, or quite frankly, where we're not at.
Anything else, Member Doshi?
No.
Any questions or comments? All right. The Health and Wellness Committee has not met. SASA report, Dr. Russell?
Yeah, so SASA has a new Executive Director, so we're very excited about that. Both the Board of Directors and the Governing Board worked side by side on that. So, what you'll anticipate, or what we'll see coming, or what you can anticipate in the spring, is our two interim superintendents right now transitioning and onboarding our new superintendent or executive director in place. And one of the conversations we are having, given the turmoil that, you know, has happened at SASA whenever you have one director leave and you're going through interims, is to talk about perhaps extending the interims for a month or two, so as that new person comes in, they can work side by side with that. But I really want to compliment Mark Cross, who's taken over the Board of Directors. There's just a different level of professionalism at the Special Education Cooperative, and you can tell that when you come into the meetings, and it's very efficiently run, and, you know, things are just moving in the right direction at SASA. The new Executive Director is from District 230, which is Sandberg High School, Andrew High School, Stat High School, and Orland and Payless, that area. Prior to that, she worked in District 99, and prior to that, she worked in a Special Education Cooperative. That was very important to us, that we had someone who had high school experience, had elementary experience, but also worked in a cooperative. Cooperatives are unique. They don't function the same way as school districts because they're made up of many school districts. SASA is one of the biggest cooperatives, and so, we wanted to make sure that that person, you know, had the ability not only emphasize relationships, but also knew how cooperatives should function and knew the local area too. So, I'm very happy about that.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Thanks. All right, we have no discussion items tonight, so that brings us to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to share public comment with the board, but is not intended to be a time for members of the public to get, enter into a dialogue with the board. Issues raised during public comment may be added to a future agenda or addressed by administrative staff when appropriate. The board has allotted 30 minutes tonight. We ask that you keep your comments to a three-minute limit to allow everyone the opportunity to speak. At this time, I have received one card from Jennifer Shu out of Kingsley.
Hello again. You probably all remember me, but to remind anyone who wasn't here last month, my name is Jennifer Shu, and I'm the parent of the second grader who isn't allowed to go to school, courtesy of Ms. Jessica Stewart over there. I wanted to update you all that we are now a month further into the school year, and my son is still sitting at home waiting for his free and appropriate public education. As an aside, Dr. Russell, doesn't matter if there's rain or 10 inches of snow tomorrow, my son will still be at home instead of in the classroom where he would learn best. As the district continues spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on its fight to keep one child out of school, I can't help but wonder why. See, this problem could go away if you'd hire just one instructional assistant at $20,000 a year, or if you'd send him to a SASA program, or if you'd send him to Alisle or Woodridge School at the non-resident rate of $20,000, $30,000 a year. All requests that we did make to you, and by the way, we were told, no, no, no. It makes me wonder if there is something more sinister going on here, something that one or more of you is trying to cover up. Could it be that you can't find anyone to fill these aid positions because the salary is so pitiful? So, rather than getting a teacher, or social worker, or the principal, or even you, Dr. Russell, to fill in as an aide, someone else decided just to fob my child off on a therapeutic school? An expense that's probably in somewhere in the $80,000 range that you'll just get the state to cover. In other words, you can't hire aides, so instead of solving that problem, you're shipping kids out to outplacements that ultimately, you won't have to pay for. Is that the reason? Are you defrauding the state and spending hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money to cover up what you're doing? I wonder what the state's attorney would think of that. Start asking some questions, please, because what you're doing defies logic. I'd rhetorically ask you to consider how much you're willing to spend on this problem because I'm in this for the long haul. By the way, yeah, I was going to say that earlier, Dr. Russell, my son will not be in school regardless of the weather this week. So, again, if they ask, please start asking some questions because I'd really like to know how much you're willing to spend to keep one kid out of school. Have a good night.
Thank you. It's the only card I have present tonight. Is there anyone else that wishes to come up and make a public comment? Okay, then that brings us to the approval of minutes. Are there any suggested revisions tonight to the minutes as presented in the packet of materials? All right, if not, is there a motion to approve the minutes from the December 11th, 2023, regular meeting as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carried to approve the minutes of the December 11th, 2023, meeting as presented. Next up is our consent agenda. Are there any items a board member would like to have considered separately? All right, then, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the personnel report and financial statements consisting of the list of bills and summary?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Melissa, please go.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannahs.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried, the consent agenda has been approved as presented in the packet of materials. We have a couple of items up for action tonight. The first one is the fiscal year 2023 audit report. Is there a motion to accept the fiscal year 23 audit report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried to accept the fiscal year 23 audit report as presented. We have the 2024 through 2025 school fees. Is there a motion to approve the 2024 through 2025 school fees as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. This, obviously, we are in a high inflation year, and this is a 6.5% increase in rates. Wondering, what are we, what is our practice proactively to reach out to families that this might be a significant increase for?
In terms of the school fees?
Yeah.
So, there's a couple of things that we do with families that may be struggling to pay. First and foremost, anyone who qualifies for free and reduced loans under the federal poverty guidelines does have the ability to get their fees waived. There are parents who are more in the in-between, where they might not fall by for free and reduced, but the fees might be a little challenging for them. So, we work with every single family. If they're unable to pay the full amount at once, we have had several families, payment plans throughout the school years, we reach out to them, you know, individually. So, what we do in that case, if somebody hasn't paid their fees, we reach out to them proactively and ask them how we can help and how we can assist. There's also a provision in our board policy where the superintendent can waive fees on a non-precedent setting basis, because what happens sometimes is when people fill out the federal form, they may be employed, and then they may lose their job, or they may have a medical hardship, or, you know, so on paper, they may look like they can qualify for that payment, but in reality, they can't. And so, there are hardship exemptions and all of those things. So, when we get, you know, any kind of an inkling that someone's struggling to pay and they haven't reached out to the us, we reach out to them. And so long as someone is working with the district and doing everything they, they can, and sometimes that means they can't do anything, but they're still keeping in communication with us, we don't send families to collections or, or things like that. Very rarely will we get someone who says, I believe public schools should be free, and I'm not paying any fees. The Supreme Court of Illinois has ruled that as long as fees are reasonable, you do have to pay them for a public school, and so, obviously, we'll treat that individual different than somebody who is struggling. So, we also recognize the fact that when people are struggling, they might not be as willing to reach out to us. And so, we do rely on our buildings, our secretaries, our principals, our social workers. They often will contact us and share information about that. So, it's kind of a combination of the building and the district reaching out, but certainly, the first contact someone is going to get from us isn't a, you know, threatening letter or anything like that.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, Melissa, please go roll.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannas.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried to approve the 2024 through 2025 school fees as presented. Next up, we have some surplus equipment, including a computer cart and floor machine. Is there a motion to designate as surplus the items listed in the attached memo?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion on this? Melissa, please go roll.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannas.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried to designate as surplus the items listed in the attached memo. We have a construction consent agenda tonight. Is there a motion to approve the construction consent agenda consisting of bid group number two, Phase 1 Elementary Schools?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Melissa, will you please go roll?
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannas.
Aye.